You good? Okay. All right. We're at time, so I'm going to call the April 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Town Board to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Present.
Councilmember Delorada.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartland.
Here.
Councilmember Brennan.
Here.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Here. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance would apply in the United States of America. And to all religions, one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
All right, we wish to respectfully acknowledge that Niskuna is on the traditional lands of the Kanighi Haka and the Morhi Konuok peoples, past and present, and we honor with gratitude the land itself and the peoples who have storied this land through generations. So, we have a relatively short agenda today, but I would like to keep with our rhythm from the last few meetings and start with the committee reports, if that's all right with everyone. We could start with Police and Public Safety.
Sure, thank you, Madam Supervisor. Police and Public Safety Committee, withheld on April 8th. Can you hear me now? Yeah. 21st to the 25th. For fleet and equipment, we have a vehicle upfitting RFB. Chief Koshin stated that the bid will be open Thursday for three vehicles with bids due by April 25th at 10:00 a.m., and those bids will be opened at 2:00 p.m. the same day in the Town Boardroom. We have a surplus of three vehicles. We have a purchase of a police vehicle, and this will be a Dodge Durango for administration. We have a purchase of Motorola vehicle equipment through our burn grant, and Chief Koshin stated this equipment is for the traffic and community engagement vehicles that are also purchased through the burn grant. Under Training, Sergeant Party will be teaching at Zone 5 Regional Academy. We have Officer Walker and Officer Mabo will be attending the countywide active shooter training at Shawmont High School that was on the 12th through the 13th, and Sergeant Party will be assisting with instruction at this training. Our Police Department will be conducting a department-wide legal update and use-of-force training on the 27th through the 30th. We'll also be conducting a department-wide training on community policing and the LGBTQ community through Police One Academy platform. Under Citizen Correspondence, we had a request for a traffic analysis on Palmer Avenue, and Chief Koshin read the traffic analysis report and stated that the speed data was within appropriate range. For Town Events, we have Coffee with the Cop at the Senior Center with Chief Koshin, Third Tuesday Monthly. We have the Cops and Kids Reading Program, and Hillside is the host school for April. We have the Paint Recycling Event, and that was on the 12th at Blatnik Park. And on the 26th, we have two events at Town Hall. We have Arbor Day Fest from 11:00 to 1:00, and we have Drug Takeback Day from 10:00 to 2:00. And we also had Supervisor Cassidy Dorian stating that Niska Day will be May 17th, so to mark your calendars. Under Town Clerk, Town Clerk Martinelli stated that the no soliciting list needs to be finalized, and the committee had a conversation about pushing that out publicly. Under Court and Town Attorney, Town Attorney Finan stated that they recently had 32 bus patrol hearings, and June 2nd is the next hearing date. Under Personnel, we're canvassing the current civil service list for potential new hires for the summer Zone 5 Academy class. And under Other, we have the Town of Niska event, Niskuna event application for the town code with road closures that's ongoing as we look at the legalities and compare other towns and figure out the best plan for us. And we have Chief Koshin stating that the DCJS Discovery Grant money awarded to us needs to be accepted, and that's $26,000. And we also talked about how this was less than previously received. We have four resolutions tonight. We have the surplus of the vehicles, we have the purchase of a police vehicle, we have the purchase of the Motorola vehicle equipment, and the acceptance of the DCJS Discovery Grant. And the next meeting for Police and Public Safety is May 1st at 3:30.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll move on to Highway and Community Programs.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. We met on April 3rd. Highway and Parks Items, Ray Smith reports on that. Personnel-wise, we are down, as of the meeting, two people for grounds workers, so we still have got applications that we're looking for in those positions. Our park crews are out with the nice weather overseeing the soccer fields, seating at Bay Brew, baseball fields, and other areas in the town. We discussed the quotes for the mowing at Baker Avenue Park. We have a reso for that this evening. We also have a reso for resurfacing of basketball courts at Blatnik Park and River Road and Avon Crest. This is all budgeted for, so that is also a reso for this evening. Lawn repair. Our drivers and wingmen from the plow trucks go out and do their own lawn repairs. So if during the wintertime they happen to get onto someone's lawn, they go out and repair those themselves, fix the damaged lawns, and they're out taking care of those items. Our yard waste pickup now started April 7th, so this is for bagged and canned yard waste. This is not loose leaf or brush. This is for canned and bagged stuff, so that's starting on April 7th. And we've made a few little adjustments with that, so if you were used to having your yard waste picked up on a certain day, a Monday, let's say, and if we have an excessive amount in your zone that particular day, it may get picked up Tuesday morning, or it may roll over, or we may start a little earlier. So if you had yard waste and your cans and bags, just get it out there by the curb, and we will do our best to get it picked up. The 2025 paving calendar is, when I say calendar, our streets are out for our first round of paving, so we try to get residents notified as soon as we know what areas we'll be paving in, so that if they're planning on maybe replacing their driveway or patching near the town road, they can contact the Highway Department. They may want to wait until after the road is paved to do their own driveway, or if they are going to be doing that kind of work, please contact the Highway Department so we can get a nice seam at the end of your driveway. We also have a reso for the mowing at Baker Avenue Park. Also at our meeting, we discussed the Alva Drive drainage situation, and we had a few residents come. One resident came and spoke a little bit about Aqueduct Park and how one of the walkways down there seems to get washed out during heavy rains, so Ray is going to meet him down there, work on that, try to get that corrected, so we don't have any kind of tripping hazards. Recreation and Community Programs, Lori Peretti. Summer Program Book is open April 4th. We discussed pool lessons for Level 1 and 2. There is, the Paint Recycling Day was April 12th. We had a Spring Hat and Bunny Parade here on April 18th at Town Hall. That was very, very well attended and well-received. Spring Soccer Update, April 21st through May 14th. K1 through 5, morning and Wednesday evenings, going very well. Driving Range is scheduled to open on April 26th, that's this Saturday, weather permitting. We also discussed a free library at the Zener Road Park. This is a Girl Scout project that we're working with us here at the town. And we discussed the ECO's proposed Pollinator Gardens in different locations at Lyons Park and here at Town Hall. Resolution Items, Spring Soccer referees. Also, we had a blood drive down at the Rec Center/Senior Center on Aqueduct Road that Councilmember Moskowitz takes care of every year for us, and it was very successful. We don't have the exact numbers yet, but 30 people or more may have donated at that, so thank you for handling that, and thanks to all who participated in that very, very important program. Senior Programs Update. All our exercise programs at the Senior Center are very well-attended, maximum capacity. There was a Mahjong Tournament on a weekend down at the Senior Center, again, max capacity, very well-attended, and the programming down there just continues to go on, which, with a lot of success, with new people coming pretty much every week, new members joining up down there at our Senior Center. Please look on their website and/or Facebook for updates there. They have a defensive driving program coming up, so lots of things going on down there. And our next meeting will be May 1st at 8:00 a.m.
Great. Thank you so much. We'll move on to Water, Sewer, and Engineering.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. The Water, Sewer, and Engineering Committee met earlier this month on April 3rd, and probably most visible around town and most visible to our residents is hydrant flushing, which began a couple of weeks ago and will continue through the month of May. Hydrant flushing takes place annually and is done to ensure that all of our fire hydrants around town are in proper working order, so they're ready to go in case of an emergency. And flushing the hydrants also helps to maintain our water quality by clearing sediment and minerals from the water mains. During flushing, residents may notice that their water is slightly discolored. The water is safe to drink during this time, but of course, clothes laundering is not recommended until the water clears. This week, our water crews are flushing in Zones 1 and 6, which includes Hexum Gardens, the Country Clubs, the CBS area, and Old Niskuna, north of Knott Street and west of Balltown Road. Next week, the crews will move into Zones 2 and 4, and a full schedule, as well as a list of streets by zone can be found on the town's website. Spring Utility Bills were mailed to residents last week. Payments for the spring billing cycle will be accepted until May 30th, after which time any unpaid balance will be added to fall bills. And also on the topic of utility billing, we did have a brief discussion regarding our water rate and infrastructure study with Raf Telus, as well as our utility billing software, and I will continue to keep everyone updated as there's movement on both of those fronts. At the wastewater treatment plant, we continue to receive two trucks a day away from Chavani, in addition to what we've been receiving all along from our Septicollers. Deputy Superintendent of Water and Sewer, Dan Bulkey, has been working with Barton LeJudas on the organic waste program, and he's also been focusing, since he's returned to the town, on maintenance of the system. One thing he's been looking at down at the wastewater treatment plant is the replacement of our sludge dryer. The current sludge dryer that we have had a life expectancy of about 10 years and is now 20 years old, so him and Superintendent of Water and Sewer Matt Yedo have been researching options, including purchasing a used dryer, which is in great shape and would be a huge cost savings to the town. Of course, before we do purchase any used equipment, we'll have the manufacturer take a look at it to ensure that it's functioning properly. Superintendent Yedo also provided the committee with an update on the River Road Water Main Replacement Project. This is a 12-inch main that stretches from Research Circle to Blatnik Park and needs to be replaced due to aging infrastructure, the significant number of water breaks in that area, as well as the increased capacity, as this main services several large industrial complexes along that corridor there, GE and Capel. This project is expected to come with a price tag of about $1.5 million, and so we've also begun exploring funding options to cover any residual costs after what's been budgeted through our capital projects, and we expect that project will probably begin sometime next year. As everyone knows, the transfer station has officially closed as of April 12th. We understand that this may be an adjustment for some residents, and so I encourage everyone to check the town's website for information on alternative disposal options. And we do have a resolution on tonight's agenda to authorize refunds for completely unused punch cards. Also on tonight's agenda, we have a resolution regarding a memorandum of agreement with the CSCA, and a resolution to appoint a maintenance worker. And our next meeting will be a week from Thursday, May 1st at 4:30. Thank you, Supervisor.
Thank you, Councilmember Moskowitz. We'll move on to Economic Development, Historic Preservation, and Environmental Conservation.
Thank you. Things are good in economic development in the town of Niskuna. We have been very blessed with GE Vernova and the other wonderful corporations that we have that took over for the SI Corp. So there are lots of subcommittees that operate out of the Economic Development and Historic Preservation Committee, the Complete Streets, the Tree Council, Architectural Review Board. We have the Comprehensive Plan Committee going full steam ahead, but the Tree Council is a big one because we have Arbor Day coming up and Arbor Fest. Over 150 years that's been going on, as long as I can remember in the town of Niskuna. It's a great event in the town, and it will be on the 26th. That's this weekend, from 11:00 to 1:00. It's a little bit different this year. We're going to have music, arts and crafts, as well as booths, and of course, giving away lots of saplings, so I'm sure, as always, we'll have a good turnout for that. So we will see, hopefully, all then. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And just as an update, this is just today, there's a lot of rain forecasted for Saturday, so we've decided to make sure that we have everything planned inside, so there's no hiccups. And our town justices were gracious enough to let us use the courtroom, so we'll have me, I think actually, all of Town Hall will be open and available for various booths, music, upstairs we'll have art, and we actually have Niskuna baseball coming to take pictures. So we really will have a jam-packed house this weekend. I encourage everybody to attend. Unfortunately, the weather is not cooperating, but that's okay. We will work around it. I'm looking forward to having everybody here.
We had it inside, was it two or three years ago? And it went very well, actually, and of course, the rain that was forecasted, I don't think ever really came, kind of a little sprinkled out there, but yeah, we'll be well-prepared, and it'll be great in here.
Yeah, I'm excited for it, and I thank Laura Robertson for all of her work on that. I just have a couple of quick updates. I'm sure anyone paying attention to the Gazette or the website has seen that the logo has put out three different options to be voted on. We've pushed that out through social media, through the Gazette newspaper, and also through our town website in hopes that we'll get as much community feedback as possible. That survey is going to be open until May 30th. I also want to mention that the logos out there are uncolored on purpose, mostly because we have to get to the final stage, and I think that the graphic designer was in a position where she wanted to make sure she had a final version of the logo in order to add color to it, so that the color had meaning that would make sense. And I would bet that she would be happy to answer any questions if anybody does have any questions on color, so you absolutely can email us, and we're happy to forward those questions over to the graphic designer and the logo committee. The other thing I wanted to mention is, sort of fell into our laps happily, we were on a call with a company that does grants administration, and they gave us a heads-up on an option for Route 7 funding that we hadn't yet explored. So a couple of weeks ago, and thank you again, Laura Robertson and the Department of Transportation and everyone else, I think there were five, six, seven people who had written us letters of support. We submitted a project that is very much like the TAP grant that we applied for last year and ultimately were not awarded. We submitted that for direct congressional spending, so basically, we're asking the federal government to look at our project and say, yes, this is worthy of funding. We went through Gillibrand's office. We are also going to be submitting that through Schumer's office. It's two different, it's the same application, except it has two different application openings, so we're just waiting for that link to be opened. But I need to give a huge thank you to the CEO of Ellis Medicine, Bellevue Hospital, who has been super supportive, even though our plans would obviously affect their business and affect a lot of work that they would have to do on their campus, and I want to give a huge thank you for him for not asking any questions and just saying, yes, this is the best thing for Route 7, and making sure that he works with us. So we're hopeful. We've been here before, so I, I'm cautiously optimistic, but this is a completely different route that we're taking, and I'm really hoping that it ends up being something that's fruitful. Just to touch on the transfer station and the punch card refunds, so in order for us to issue refunds, we have to have a legal mechanism to do so. Originally, we had put for full punch cards, which you get a $20 punch card every time you're using it, you're punching off a dollar, depending on what it is that you're submitting. There were quite a few people who had, in the last few days, just come in and said, hey, you know, it isn't a full punch card, but maybe there's a dollar, $2, $3 off of it. We're not trying to prevent those people from getting a refund, so we modified the language slightly in the resolution so that we could include those folks. And everyone that we've talked with, we've asked them to come and submit those punch cards with a name and an address that we can send a refund check to. So given that it's approved tonight, we'll be able to do that pretty immediately. The other thing is that we have been looking at some different ways that we can try to help our recycling efforts in the absence of the transfer station. We had our paint recycling this past weekend. It was really well-received. I'm not sure, I realize, how many people in town actually have paint to recycle, but the people who missed it were really upset and wanted us to do it again, so I think that's on our agenda, as well as another e-recycling. We're looking at doing three of those for the remainder of the year. We also have had some conversations with a textile recycling company that may be able to help us donate clothes, and then clothes that cannot be donated or repurposed, they would actually help us recycle them. So a couple of things that are not exactly the transfer station, but helping us to be as green as possible with the funds that we have. I also just wanted to say on the resurfacing, we're, as I mentioned at the beginning of the year, we're trying to clean up a lot of parks projects that have been sort of hanging out there for a little bit, for various reasons. We have bigger projects that sometimes take precedent, we have things that sort of move ahead of smaller projects. We had some money left over in a grant. We were lucky to have the grant say something about court resurfacing, and even though we couldn't, we didn't have enough money to do the project that we wanted because of the way that we had applied for it, we're able to use it for the basketball courts. We also applied for a community foundation grant, so we're hoping to get a little bit more funding without asking the taxpayers for a couple of new hoops, and at the same time, resurfacing all of the outdoor basketball courts as well. We're hopeful about that. Either way, we will have the courts refinished, so they will be in a much better playable condition for the, for the summer. And thank you, Ray, for getting all of those quotes. We were really lucky to have a great vendor who gave us a great price on, I think it was three different sets of courts. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, our town assessor wanted to make sure that I mentioned that the tentative assessment rule is filed May 1st. The grievance day is May 27th, and all grievance applications have to be received at the assessor's office, which is right here in Town Hall by the close of business that day. And if you have any questions, the assessor's office is awesome. They are great, they, they really are fantastic, super welcoming. I mean, I know for a fact Nicholas Cage has made an appearance in your office once or twice, so he's very approachable if you have anybody who has any questions or wants to talk with him about that. They are here. And with that, I think we'll move on to Privilege of the Floor. I'm not sure if we have a list going, but we'll start with that. One list? Fantastic.
Good evening, everyone. Natalie Tiberio, 45-plus-year resident. Okay, tonight, I'm going to bring to your attention something I came across on the Niskuna Town website. It's a report detailing water and sewer charges that were in arrears as of November 2024 for commercial properties in our township. What really caught my attention was seeing GE Global, Capel, and Army Reserve listed among the properties with outstanding balances. The total amount of the report, including fines, is about $462,740, but the report also shows $61,000 collected. However, it is added to the total of 462, totaling 462. So that number raised some concerns and questions. First, what kind of impact does this have on our town's cash flow? When revenue like this doesn't come in on time, it can create pressure on the budget, and often, the way municipalities compensate is by increasing taxes and fees on the rest of us. I know there are other ways to handle that, but that's one of them. This also reminded me of the $400,000 from 2024, that money that was never billed to taxpayers in one of the water districts, I forget which one. So now we're looking at almost, almost $900,000 in loss or delayed revenue, and just from, and this is just from reviewing just one area. So has this been paid yet? Are they in arrears for property taxes? To be clear, I don't even have the full picture. I haven't seen the report on commercial property delinquencies, tax delinquencies, but I do think it's worth raising the issue. GE and Capel is our largest commercial property owner, and when payments from major entities are late, the impact doesn't go unnoticed, I'm sure. It affects our services, our planning, and ultimately, our taxpayers. So understanding the town's position on this would be helpful. You can address it either, you know, later, or you can email me, or you can do it next month. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Do you have any, just one? All right, anyone else that would like to speak at Privilege of the Floor?
Leslie Gold. And just briefly, I'm disappointed in the survey on the logo, that it's a very closed process. You gotta get one of the three from the committee, and it's not open to artists in town who might submit something we would like better. And I know there were supposed to be paper ballots, and I haven't been able to find one. And yes, I do miss the transfer station already. I think it's a decision you'll come to regret eventually, and I do hope you keep the land apart from Blatnik Park. And I will note, originally, it was the town dump was there long before Blatnik Park was ever thought of. 75 years' history there. And is, requirements changed? We went to a transfer station and expanded the opportunities for recycling. I remember when I was a new homeowner, the big recycling thing was every year, the high school had a paper drive, and they collected newspapers, because you could get decent money for them. But then there were other things that needed to be recycled, and people started to take notice of that and work on it. And I do think the town needs to do more than just a once or twice-a-year electronics and a once-a-year paint. Just not enough. On good news, I'm aware of one part of the paving schedule. I'm very pleased with that part, and I'm glad that the town is continuing that program. I live on one of the roads that needs to be repaved. And that's good. There's been talk, and I don't know if it's, there's any basis to it, but that the town is considering taking the low-pressure water lines and making them high-pressure. Don't know. It's, I know it's been talked about before. And if it is the case, I'd like to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Good evening. My name is Haney Santana, 815 Trottingham Drive. Couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. Several years ago, the Democratic Party sent out a, sent out a mailer calling Yasmin and myself white supremacist supporters. Because of that, my home was vandalized, not once, but twice. They broke up my lawn furniture, they threw garbage on my lawn, and they took signs and threw it in the street. So I want you to understand that Jason's recent comments about calling people right- that Jason's recent comments about calling people right-wing crazies is again inciting violence. Just this week, the GOP headquarters in Albany, they put swastikas all over the door. I think that's really horrendous. That shouldn't happen. And people should not incite violence. So if anything happens to me or anyone on the committee, I'm holding Jason and this entire board responsible because it's not right. So the last time I came up to spoke, to speak, Jason, John, and yourself were laughing at me. I want to know why you like to laugh at black people that come up to talk about an issue. I'm very upset about that. I think that's very racist. And, you know, maybe you didn't mean it. I don't know. But you don't communicate. People are not felt respected when they come up here. I mean, that poor gentleman that, that lost his son. What happens? Every time he comes up, I see all of you scoffing. You have this look on your face like, oh, God, he's here again. And you really should not have that type of attitude. The taxpayers pay your salary. That includes your health benefits and everything else you get. You know, and you don't seem to take that as serious as you should take it. You think that, hey, I'm here and I can do what I want. Well, not really, because you all will be held accountable. So I want to address the right, the right-wing comment. What is right-wing crazy? Someone that wants lower taxes, controlled spending, affordability, roll back the water and sewer rates, reopen the transfer station? If that's right-wing crazy, well, you know what? Guilty as charged, because I believe, like everyone else in this town, that the taxes are too high. That no one's listening to anyone speak at all. You condemn everybody, and it's wrong. Every single one of you is wrong to do that. I mean, for you, Bill. Diane O'Donnell I happen to know. And Diane told me that she put her application in for supervisor. That's when Puccinini left. And you criticized her, allegedly criticized her, saying that there has to be healing because she criticized Landry. So what is it? Do people have to bow down to each and every one of you to get anything? I think it's wrong. But now I see Diane has a job because she's friends with your mom. You know, it, this is like a cesspool, and each of you are responsible for it. So, you know, you, you do things, you say things, you, you treat the taxpayer like we're a bunch of idiots. I mean, Intron, you simply said that the water rates were complicated and town residents were, couldn't understand it. But now you go out and hire a consultant. You have town residents that are PhDs, experts in engineering and water and sewer. You have construction people coming up, giving you information, and you don't seem to use it. You don't seem to acknowledge that they have something to contribute to this town. So that's one thing I just wanted to say. But anything that happens to me, my children or my grandchildren because of his inflammatory remarks, I'm holding you all responsible for. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Linda Rizzo, 2229 Fairlon Parkway, Niskiuna. I'm going to piggyback on what Mrs. Santana said. Lower taxes, stopping fees increases, which are backdoor taxes, fixing the water rates so residents aren't drowning with their water bills, stop hiring consultants to do your job on the taxpayers' dime, treating employees fairly by having annual performance reviews, which some employees said you don't do here unless they're making it up. I find this unbelievable that you don't do performance reviews. These are not crazy right-wing ideas. This is the GOP platform. Exactly, Jason, what is right-wing about these issues, which, by the way, you voted against? Please name the right-wing issues the GOP insisted you support. There are none. This is you're promoting political tribalism. Categorize people instead of unifying them. In your press release, you stated that you can pick up the right-wing crazies because they write letters and speak at meetings. While one person, Steve Betton, and he asked me to mention his name, is furious that he's being categorized that way. He is a respected resident and a professional in his field. He is hardly right-wing. There are other residents also who spoke to me about it, and they're furious with that comment. I did not give permission to mention their names tonight, but when they do give me permission, I will, and I've got at least 20. Neither is the GOP a political right-wing crazy. She's a Fordham graduate with a political science degree. If you placed your resume next to those you call right-wing, it would be anemic in comparison. You said the Niskiuna GOP does not represent Republicans. Let me remind you, our GOP candidates secured 312 signatures. You had 192 when they were, the some were thrown out. You went down to 160, well below the requirement. If you felt you had a case, instead of insulting people, instead of turning people against me, instead of having people who say they support you make vile comments on Facebook, you would have gone to court. We were ready to go to court. We were ready. You didn't go because your petitions would have been thrown out again.
Are we going to talk about town business tonight?
This is town business. No, this is. Because you see, he's a board member who's calling residents right-wing crazies. And wait a minute.
You guys want to know what's laughable? This is laughable.
This isn't laughable. No, it isn't. It isn't, John, and I'll tell you why. Because you had a quote in the paper when you didn't run for an endorsement that the Democratic Party was too progressive. Well, you know, maybe he should have followed your advice and responded the same way.
Town business?
This is town business. Raising taxes, water bills, these are not right-wing.
How much of your tax has gone up in the past 10 years, Mrs. Rizzo?
They've gone up.
What's the number?
They've gone up. Listen, I, we're not supposed, hey, you want to get in a dialogue? I can stay up here all night. I think I will.
Let's not get into dialogue. Your three minutes is up.
No, I'm not going while he's speaking. All right, I'm not going. Under Joe Landry, we never had a problem.
Linda, finish up your comments.
He just insult, he's just going back. I have a right, I pay taxes here too.
I am asking you for the same.
I know.
Which I've afforded everybody else.
He didn't go after anybody else.
I'm sorry. He's asking you.
I'm not taking a backseat to anybody on this board, including you, John.
Would anybody else like to speak for Privilege of the Floor? No, I'm sorry. No, Haney, I'm sorry, we.
No, no, no. Let me just say this.
No, this is my meeting, and so I'm saying that you have had your three minutes, and so you can sit down.
I'm going to say this to you, Intron. What John just did is wrong. And I would appreciate if you would correct your board members from doing that to residents. A resident can speak about whatever that they want to bring up. It, you know, it's, quote, classified as town business. It's not fair. And that's what I was trying to bring out to you before about the respect. John doesn't have it. John has issues. We all know it. But you know what? Please, you are in control then, then control his mouth.
I didn't realize I was in control of you, John. Would anybody else like to speak? And with that, we will close Privilege of the Floor and move on to our resolutions and start with 2025-100, which is a resolution sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing payment to Tyler Technologies, Inc. for renewing, renewal of software licensing and support services.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is our Immunis software, the accounting software that we use for ERP, just to renew. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
2025-101, sponsored by Councilmember Delarata. Will the clerk please read?
A resolution amending fire inspection fees.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? So we went through this. Our town planner, thank you, Laura, for this as well. This only affects our District 2, Fire District 2 properties. We also went through it to make sure that we weren't creating an undue burden on our businesses, particularly the small businesses that reside, that are located in Fire District 2. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland. Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-102, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution hiring recreation attendants in the town's Office of Community Programs.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seasonal hiring. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-103, sponsored by Councilmember Delarata.
A resolution appointing an individual to the Conservation Advisory Council.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
We are almost filled up with all of our committee seats. I mean, we have two or three left, but I think in 2022, we had 11 or 12 open. So this is really, really good. I'm glad to see the people coming and volunteering and really giving us input because we use it.
We've had some great people come in that have sort of said, I'll do whatever you need me to do. Here's my expertise, and they've been great.
It has been great. And it's meaningful because they're coming to committee meetings where they're giving input, where we can actually put it into action. So yes, thanking all of the committee members. It's volunteer work. It's a lot of time out of their day, but they're committed. They do a great job. And that reminds me of why we got a ceremony resolution that we got to do this spring for that wonderful architect who's volunteered like a quarter of his life to the town and his community.
That sounds like a good one.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-104, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution authorizing the hiring of a contractor to resurface basketball courts in the town of Niskiuna.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We chit-chatted about it earlier. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-105, sponsored by Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution authorizing the superintendent of highways to award a contract for certain lawn mowing and trimming services on Baker Avenue Park.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-106, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan and Councilmember McPartland.
A resolution authorizing the disposition of certain town-owned surplus equipment.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Just a note here on the resolution. Actually, in the packet, the number's not correct.
The resolution number?
It says 83, but it's 106.
Sorry, I'm okay.
I can change that.
It just says slight typographical.
Any other comments? Do I need to do it as amended, or is that just a typo? Great. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-107, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing certain budgetary modifications and inter-fund transfers.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We talked about it during the agenda meeting. These are the 2024 year closeouts where we're moving things around to make sure everything fits the way that it is supposed to. With no further discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-108, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution appointing a water and sewer maintenance worker in the town's Water and Sewer Department.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-109, sponsored by Councilmember Delarata.
A resolution appointing a student representative to the Complete Streets Committee.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. 2025-110, sponsored by Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
A resolution authorizing the supervisor to enter into an amendment to the utility credit purchase agreement.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
This was the solar information that I had sent. I know it was lengthy, so I tried to send the summary version in layman's terms, which is basically just an easier way for them to allocate the funds so that we can get our credits in our National Grid bill. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember Delarata.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland. Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-111, sponsored by Councilmember De La Rada.
A resolution authorizing expenditures from fund balance.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This was an old grant. The monies got rolled back into fund balance, and we're, all we're doing is just moving them back in, because it was a shuffle at the end of the year with, in the absence of a comptroller. That's pretty much it. Any other questions on this? All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-112, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing the town to enter into memorandum of understanding with CSEA Water and Sewer Bargaining Unit.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? This is the sleep time, right? Okay. Great. Long time coming. Glad we're getting it through. Any other discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-113, sponsored by Councilmember Moskowitz.
A resolution authorizing refunds for fully unused transfer station punch cards.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Do we have to amend it on here, even though it's correct on the, the update is correct on there? But it's okay, we don't have to, okay. So if you're looking at the actual resolution, we made the updates very recently. This was just yesterday. So we wanted to make sure that we could get folks that might have, you know, $19 on a $20 punch card. That's the only reason for the change. Any other discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-114, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Schenectady County and authorizing the acceptance of funding related to discovery and bail reform from the New York State Division of Criminal Justice Services.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Stick on us that $26,000 grant that helped fund our discovery clerk position.
Nice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Rada.
Aye.
Councilmember McPartland.
Aye.
Councilmember Brennan.
Yes.
Supervisor Cassidy Dorian.
Yes.
Five ayes.
The resolution passes. On to 2025-115, sponsored by Councilmember Brennan.
A resolution authorizing the purchase of a police vehicle.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion on this? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Moskowitz.